Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome you to the planning zoning board. I'd like you to please stand and raise up your... Please leave us. Thank you. June, can we have roll call, please?
Clay Hamer.
Yes.
Dickerson.
Here.
Gucian.
Here.
Pachowski.
Here.
Bullerkin.
Here.
Paul Burley.
Here.
Daley.
Chief Daley is excused.
Okay. Rannieri.
Here.
Potis.
Here.
Vanilla.
Here.
Stone.
Here.
Rowan.
Here.
Dave Crick.
Here.
And Keith Knight.
Here.
Wonderful. Public notice of this meeting pursuant to the Open Meeting Act has been given by the clerk in the following manner: Posted on the voting board in the borough clerk's office, emailed to the retrospect and concierge post. The first order of minutes would be an approval of the minutes from the May 11 meeting, with a motion on the floor for a minutes approval.
Ooh.
Second.
All right. Mr. Dickerson, second one. Mr. Gucian, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Under new business, we have an application by Cooper Urgent Care. Gentlemen, if I can swan up and...
Mr. Speaker, this is to the record, as my claim of record, that Dennis now is filling the vacant seat of Chief Daley.
Yes, sir.
As our personal...
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair. My name is Kevin Shay. I'm a parlay broker at Kayden, and I represent the African Camp, which is L-N-R-A, the LLC. The property is 20 Black Horse Pike. It's located across the street here from the 7-Eleven building, across the street of Black Horse Pike and Clemens Bridge Road. On the proposal is to put a Cooper Urgent Care Center in the existing facility, or to rebuild a Cooper Urgent Care Center. Property association is commercial, and it's meant to all issues which is permitted. So we'll be seeing various for parking setback and impervious coverage, and some sign barriers. This is CBAC, you know, about two visits to this area. I've got about four witnesses, if I have them also.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All doing, you won't swear our... Gentlemen, is everyone getting testimony tonight? Would you please come up? Gentlemen, you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give this board tonight is truthful and accurate to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
And I believe that Kevin, I don't think you have to qualify your word. I believe these, I'm familiar with you, with this is...
Okay. So can you say your name and affiliation, Director?
My name is Rick Paul. I'm ABD of Facilities for Cooper University of Health Care.
And you're familiar with the private group we're seeking group, isn't it?
Yes, I am.
Can you give the board a short summary of what that is from Cooper's perspective as far as the operation?
Okay, we're building an urgent care center with five exam rooms, two procedure rooms for stitches and things like that, and an extra room. The... We believe there's going to be one physician and one...
Nurse practitioner.
Nurse practitioner on the site. Sorry, thank you. One RN, one medical assistant, one radiation technologist, and one registrar slash receptionist. We don't expect patients to be arriving by ambulance. We expect it mostly, you know, to be car traffic coming in. Sorry. Sorry. The hours during Monday and Friday will run from eight to eight, and on Saturdays and weekends, it's going to run from nine to five. We expect about 35 patients per day, and we... The typical visit is about an hour, from the time they start, get treated, and go. We're going to have some deliveries, the standard stuff, trash truck, you know, dumpsters, and that will be a standard kind of dumpster trash truck that comes, that pulls in and out. We'll have cars and maybe small vans for lab pickups, small box trucks, you know, typical FedEx. We don't expect a lot of that. We expect the trash to be like once a week, something to that effect, and then daily lab pickups, but those are all sort of small potatoes. Let's see, we have a box truck that will come for our sterile cycle, and a box truck for oxygen tanks. That's about it for the operations. Fairly straightforward.
More than any questions?
Do you see any ambulances coming to the property at all?
You know...
Or leaving from the property?
Once in a great while that could happen, and that's part of why we think that makes us different, being Cooper as opposed to the more commercial urgent care sites that we do. Offer trauma services, you know, X-ray, emergency services where they can be taken.
And once you stabilize the patient, you might want to have them transported to the next level?
Absolutely, but that would be pretty rare. We wouldn't expect that to happen at all.
Will Cooper Hospital be utilizing the Rami location to have just people come visit at that location rather than go to Cooper?
It's really about a different kind of service. We expect that somebody who, whose doctor is maybe not available since we have different hours, and they just sort of have a busted ankle or, you know, a cut on their hand and need stitches, that they'll come here and it's a better cost model than sort of driving to an emergency department. So we don't see it as a freestanding emergency department so much as we see it as a different kind of primary care. And that's the way it's evolved over time. It's a much more efficient cost model to go into the ER. Saves a ton of money.
Right, and you mentioned the ER. Would your ER doctors be possibly, if the ER doctor were to give stitches to a patient, would they direct them to perhaps in 10 days when the stitches need to come out, to go visit the Cooper Center in Rami, or back to the ER?
You know, they would typically refer them back to a primary care doc.
Okay.
I think that relative to this, it's staffed by our emergency doctors. So, you know, Mike Kirchhoff and Jim Flowers are the guys who are mostly responsible for the site, and they are ER doctors. So if they see somebody that triages, that needs to be in a different place, they'll go there. They would tend to say, you know, if there's something that requires more care, you know, "See your primary care doc, you know, after this, in a couple of weeks," or they'll check back in home. But typically, if it's a real sick person or a serious injury, they'll get it to the ER.
Thank you.
Any else? Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you. As I read this, I'm concerned regarding the site, it would be decked up. CBAC, 304 Waiver Pike, 10x New Jersey, Principal of CBAIC Associates, President and Mayor of Register, Deputy General Counsel, Assistant Judge. So the site is what's being blocked. It's blocked 112 lots 13 and 13.01. The two lots will be consolidated as part of this application. The existing site is 26.7 acres. It is bounded by, it's in the commercial zone, bounded all by commercial properties and commercial uses. At corner of Clemens Bridge and the Black Horse Pike. All of the existing site improvements that currently were there for the 7-Eleven will be removed. There should be a ground-up construction, all new paving, all new curving, and obviously a new building, new building. Will be 4,781 square feet, single-story building. There, in terms of the site, we have some challenges with the design. We have a grave difference of approximately 4.5 feet where Clemens Bridge is higher than the Black Horse Pike by 4.5 feet. You know, as a rear parking lot on the rear, which is slightly, is elevated and draining towards the rear of the property. So, and should I mark this?
Yeah, mark A1.
A1.
And that's the area.
A2 is a color representation of the submitted site plan. So the configuration of the building is towards the rear of the property. The elevation of the building will be kept up at the higher Clemens Bridge Road elevation for visibility and also for drainage purposes. So, and also so we don't have water coming from the adjacent property. The general configuration of the site will be, it says, the long expanded curb cuts that currently exist along the 7-Eleven property, or some of the property that's... It'll be refined down to two new curb cuts. The curb cut under Clemens Bridge Road would be a full movement except for restricting left turns out, and that is under the jurisdiction of the DOT and Camden County. And then we have a right-in, right-out on the Black Horse Pike. At the application meetings with the driving engineer, we shocked our associates from here from Shirley, with both DOT and Camden County regarding these curb cuts. We're hoping to have those approvals in short order. In terms of the elevation also, the entrance off of Clemens Bridge Road and the main parking field, which consists of 23 parking spaces, will be relatively flat and level. There will be approximately 8% driveway grade change coming off of the Black Horse Pike. We're trying to keep it generally in the configuration as it currently is graded. So we're not raising the site too much, so we're not doing a full fill and creating an impact along the curve of the site. There is also, and in terms of parking, 23 spaces are provided. This is considered now an office use based on the comments from the boards of professionals, Mr. Pedd, Mr. Crick. We have replaced it as a retail, where we calculated only 12 spaces being required, but it being an office use, 16 spaces are required, so we're still compliant in terms of parking. And this office use will go in, come in further when we talk about site changes. There is a existing ingress deep restion that these last 15 foot wide that's immediately adjacent to the Rita's property. We will leave that intact and paved, and generally we're discounting that from our development, moving our development over, so that swap of paving will remain intact.
That's one way that was this deep?
I'm sorry?
That's one way, I believe, isn't it?
I don't, I don't know. I don't know.
I think, well, it used to be CBS back there before the attorneys moved in. I believe that easement was one-way in only.
So we're proposing not to change that in the configuration or anything, so that way the Rita's operations is...
You know, how many cross reinforcements in that property and the tower?
No, this, the only use on our property is literally this 15-foot wide strip. Now, in terms of what Rita has with the rear properties, I'm not aware. So we're not affecting the existing use, but that's the only reason that currently exists on the site. We provided that information from Mr. Crick. Mr. Crick's office. In terms of operation, main entrance is right towards the point, right towards the corner of the intersection. Trash enclosure to the southern portion of the site. We have provided truck towing templates to make sure that the trash trucks and lumber trucks can enter, exit, and circulate through the site without any hesitation. We do have access from the Black Horse Pike in terms of sidewalk, originally proposed at the adjacent to the Black Horse Pike entrance in our meeting, and we have a directed meeting with Mr. Crick. It is amended on Monday, discuss all the tax items. We actually are amending that configuration to move the sidewalk towards the point, to eliminate any possibility of interference with that more steep Black Horse Pike. And when I'm saying steep, a typical parking lot is about anywhere from 3% to 5%, and you say this will be 8%. It'll be no more steep than a residential driveway, so... So we're moving the sidewalk to there and connecting it up to the ramp in front of the building, which is the handicap ramp, eliminating the handicap ramp that was towards the south. We're also adding sidewalk all around the rear and side burner, where we're going to do additional access door. So we have updated our calculations based on that for impervious coverage. Originally, as currently exists, 75.5% of the site is impervious building or pavement. We're bringing it down to 63.5%, where 50% is permitted. This is what we're making, we're making actually making about 10% where we're bringing it to right now. In terms of drainage, we, under the stormwater regulations, we do not need the definition of a major development. All we have to do is just natage our stormwater in terms of eliminate flooding. So we're directly connecting new inlets on the site into the DOT system, and that is part of the application that's currently in front of DOT right now.
What are you doing with the area where the tanks were, the gas tanks were?
In terms of remediation?
Yes.
Right now, we're not going to have any impact because we're not doing anything to stormwater in terms of trying to infiltrate it to the ground or purge it to the ground. So we're not going to have any impact on where the tanks are, and the stormwater won't affect anything with the tanks.
Thank you.
Well, was it, Steve, wasn't the ground all clear for that once 7-Eleven took the tanks out?
It's my understanding, and I'll speak to you generally, my understanding that Southland of the property is ultimately responsible for all environmental issues.
Well, you guys were, you're the ones purchasing it, or Cooper's, right? So they're taking that under the assumption that everything's been taken care of?
So they're acting...
Oh, we prefer to be careful about...
Yeah.
Oh, they are, okay.
But Southland is responsible for, before this is constructed?
That will all be cleared.
We, it'll be a pain, sorry, my understanding.
Steve, can you mark that in the near part of the...
Yeah. In terms of additional site improvements, we are...
Are that A4 is on?
A4 is a colored rendition of the landscaping plan we met, as we, we did professionals. We will be supplementing the landscaping to the, to the north and southern side of the building. There was a discussion about adding additional strip trees along the front. We're asking not to do that, but add additional landscaping, trying to keep this building in the site in the corner. Obviously, we have...
I agree with that.
And we'll work out final landscaping details. We've already attempted to try to provide a more generous package, and this was at the instance of the application Cooper, and will be supplemented even further towards the rear grass area if we try to avoid that. The variances that are here, and I'll be, I'll be coming back later, does provide the planning testimony in terms of the positive and negative criteria, is a parking setback, 12 feet, where currently it's 8 feet. So, and it is required to be 20 feet. So parking from the property line in the C-zone has to be 20 feet back. Currently it's 8. We're making it a little better, we're making it 12. It is necessary, as this is a regular shaped lot, and it's difficult to develop this without having that approach into the parking setback. The rest of the variances, I'm going to go back to impervious coverage. That's technically an existing condition that we're making better. I wouldn't call it a variance, but we'll call it a variance, right, perfect, you turn for that. So we need the variance or the impervious coverage of 63.5% if noted, or 50% is permitted. The rest of the variance has to do with signage. There's, the signage package, it says of a main high line, high rock sign rated at the intersection with two smaller directional signs, two feet, two square foot area, less than 30 inches tall, with the... So I'll put the location on, show what the site looked like in a moment, and then we have the sod signs. There was a variance originally requested to have one of the signs go over the corners where the power grid line, that has been removed. That, that number has been requested. And we're up to?
At A5.
A5?
Yeah.
This is a colored rendition of the signage plan that we provided, which is part of your package. The high rock sign will be 15 feet in height where 8 feet is permitted in this zone. It will have an LED display. That is not permitted, and we're asking for that to be. And because we went from a retail use to an office use, retail is about 8 square feet, and this is an office, we're on 20 square feet is required. We are 42.75 square feet. We believe it's still a reasonable area in terms of height of signage, especially on the Black Horse Pike, Clemens Bridge Road. We want to identify the site, try to have all the traveling motorists identify where our site is, and get them to make their decisions early enough to safely enter and exit. To enter the site, which is remotely, I've dropped our associates, will provide additional testimony in terms of what...
Steve, that's not double-sided, is it?
It is double-sided.
So the big, well, I'm just putting, reading it to them.
It's double-sided. It's double-sided, and as indicated, it'll be at the corner, and it'll be perpendicular in the intersection.
And this sits between the sidewalk and the parking lot?
Yes, it's a, it's a grass area right adjacent to where we're doing the new sidewalk in between the first park install and the road, adjacent to the Black Horse Pike. So, right kind of location. The directional sign would be adjacent to on the, the right-hand side of the Black Horse Pike entrance, and the same thing for on the Clemens Bridge.
And does it reference to the breakaway hardware, or is that applicable?
Sorry?
The breakaway hardware?
Uh, we're, we'll be well within the site, so we don't believe that we'll have, and the site will be fully curved, so we don't believe we'll need any breakaway hardware for the signs. And so the other variance besides the area is to allow free, technically we have free standing signs, even though two are, the directional, only two are permitted. So that is a variance to have one additional directional sign. If I may, I've, we're not going through any detailed analysis of the report, but I just want to confirm the testimony, five or six items that we agreed to provide testimony when we met, and requiring for Mr. Pettis' letter of achievement second. So in terms of the checklist items, we are asking for that in terms of submission waivers as part of this table. That would be on page...
Re- thank you.
Right, so we are asking for those checklist waivers, and we agree to that at that meeting.
All else, no objection.
For all, all the neighbors?
For all, yeah. Number six, number six, actually, we do, but they're going to provide the setback lines, and we do have the easement. So I don't know if number six is actually required. Covenants and deed restrictions was provided too, so number eight actually is...
Correct. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Just want to talk on page four, in terms of, item number seven, only the rear doors, which was as it provide ADA accessibility for the rear doors. It'll be, it will be, they will not be ADA accessible doors. They actually have a step down. The ADA accessible entrance and requirements for the building code will be the front entrance. So I just want to put that as clarification. Item number 12, this goes to as we have changed the location of the ADA ramp. We were saying this was a ramp, we know crosswalk, being able to go to any place. Now we have actually connected it to a crosswalk, so it is a full ADA ramp. Everything is well applied all the way going now to A6. Item number eight on A6. And this is eight and 10, both can be discussed together. This has to do with the slope of the entrance on the Black Horse Pike. There was some concern that we're trying to get that to underneath that technical standard of 5% as we provided testimony, because we have the significant grade change between the two sides of the site. We agree now that will be no greater than 8% on that Black Horse Pike drive aisle, and with the relocation of the crosswalk now further down to the area where it's flat on the parking lot. We believe that's acceptable.
Yeah, absolutely. That's, that's one of the things we discussed. Obviously, some testimony was provided on the grading issues on the site, and one of the things we decided to do was move that end cap accessible crosswalk from the, from the more steep, let's call it steeper area of the parking lot, to the more flatter area of the parking lot, which allows a little more flexibility to level off that slope.
So, this is going to be on a revised plan?
Yes, okay. Yes, and we'll have a point by which when we spot, when we do this, and when we make sure we're sound.
The, Steve, the slope between the left, go up more, yeah, there, like now it's all graded down to run towards the Black Horse Pike. So you're saying it's going to be relatively flat?
Yes, so this, this will be flattened out, so...
Yeah, go ahead, I'm listening.
The area where we connect up to the existing...
The law firm behind us?
Yeah. So we're taking really the grade of Clemens Bridge here, and where we're attaching up to the parking lot or the law firm. That's going to kind of set our base mark for our elevation for the pad and for the parking lot.
Okay.
So this will actually be filled up to a degree in the back here, and then as we get down to the Black Horse Pike, that's where we're going to start.
So you're not going to get as much runoff from his building?
Correct. We actually are squaring.
And then where's do your drains going in?
We actually are adding new inlets in our parking lot, and taking it right into the DSP system, right in, right into the street, right into the existing stormwater system. So right now, everything's surface low, all blacked up, and just goes over the extended driveway that they have there. We're not going to be challenging them to, I believe it's two inlets, and one of the things also we're going to add is a, a leader line for the roof leaders inside of it. So everything will be piped at this point. That brings me to item number 13. In the area where we had a swill along the back of the property, we're going to estimate it'll only go to about 1.5% versus 2%. I think we're going to do that. Only if you're... Page seven of 10, as I just talked about, under the total length one roof leaders, we will be hard lighting the roof leaders now underground into the one-site inlet system that we have, and that'll be an exit door for the DOT system. Only half of it, item number five, it will be stringed. We have environmentics, the project architect will provide, depending on how that string will occur. Item we were talking about in the street trees. And the final part would be light. There will be, there's currently posed two shoebox type of lighting fixtures that are actually shielded to the career, eliminate any light going to the Black Horse Pike. We're going to add a third towards the Clemens Bridge Road entrance, so we have three lights, third that fills the left seat, all the other peripheral establishments, something down the bike lane in the burrow. There is building that had lights under canopy for the front door, shining down, and then we will be required to have lights at each doorway, but they will not be a whole package that clares out. They will be down with the front. So from the rest of the neighbors, all they're going to see is the light flowing by the door. They won't be seeing a whole pack, so we won't have any of those. And with everything else, our offices have arrangements to address and comply with all the other comments raised by Mr. Crick.
We met for about an hour Monday morning and really hashed out all the details. The largest of which really was, they got some challenges with grading, and I think we were able to come up with some compromises to really help that situation out a little bit. Just one last thing, rather than go through every point, I'd like to, the lighting, talk about like 24-hour lighting. I know that was something we discussed.
I apologize. That was in my notes, and I was running it a little too quickly. Due to the nature, we did discuss this at length in terms of conference calls with Cooper, due to the nature of what this use is, they would like to keep their lights 124 hours, so they do not want to turn it down. They do have medicine inside the building, because they just want it for security purposes. At this busy intersection and being surrounded in its entirety by other commercial uses, I believe that's, that's...
We don't, we don't look but any residential property for quite a far distance.
Yeah, pretty fair distance.
Yeah, fair distance for sure.
These are lights in the building or outside?
Site lights, 124.
Yeah, the light, the site lighting, yeah.
So is that considered a variance?
No, that's just passing for information.
Yeah, it's actually part of our complaint, so...
It would not be appropriate, most likely, if they were adjacent to a residential neighborhood to have 24-hour lighting. You would have to probably provide visual shielders coming after that for a few years.
We're fully done on 24 hours, so you guys should have competition. Christmas time, it's a good night.
And are there other power cases that we're working out? So with that, I think it would be appropriate to have just broken from the drop there and get out of the way.
Thanks, Steve.
Can you say your name and then please, Director?
Yeah, Nathan Mosley. With Shropshire Associates, 277 White Horse Pike, active in New Jersey. I'm a licensed professional in the state of New Jersey. I've worked at Shropshire for 13 years now.
And Shropshire Associates prepared the track to report this as?
We did, yes.
You're familiar with that report?
Yes. Sure, we put together a roof traffic assessment to be exposed Cooper Urgent Care facilities. We just subtract accounts of the existing Black Horse Pike Clemens Bridge Road intersection during the morning peak period from 7:09 and the afternoon peak period from 4:06. We compiled that data down into the busiest peak hour in the morning, the busiest peak hour in the afternoon. And then we looked at the existing conditions for that intersection, as well as the future conditions, both with and without this proposed development. In order to determine the impact of proposed development, we did a trip generation analysis. Because on a state highway, we use the DOT, they call it HAPs, trip generation rates, these are used to determine type of permitting you're going to have to apply for, for your driveway. They're very similar to the Institute of Transportation Engineer Trip Generation Rate, which are kind of standard, it's used for most traffic impact studies for development throughout the country. So the proposed site's a pretty minimal intense usage, about, we're looking at about 17 trips in the morning peak hour, about 20 trips below in the afternoon peak hour. Compared to what was out there before with the 7-Eleven convenience store, you're looking at a very minimal impact, you know, visiting maybe in the morning for a little bit, visiting in the afternoon. You know, throughout the day, you're not looking at the same kind of high share of traffic you had with that convenience store. In addition, I think Steve talked about it, where we are... In addition, I think Steve talked about it, where we are modifying the existing driveways that are out there. Apparently, there's a two huge curb cuts along the Pike, we're going to condense all that in down into a right in, right out only. So you won't have any left traffic in, you won't have any left traffic in the left out. We're going to reduce the number of conflicts and improve the safety of that location. In addition, on Cooper, um, Cooper, um, I'm kind of sorry, I have too many different projects in my head. Uh, on Columbus Bridge, we're reducing the number of movements there, we're getting rid of that left out, which is, you know, definitely the most difficult movement, there's a lot of traffic on Columbus Bridge. And that driveway is hard up against the stop work today, so eliminating that left out will quickly improve the access to the site. And again, with the city living there, it's not a, it's not a movement we really need, people can come out of the Pike and they can take a left and that is the one turn. We're definitely doing a lot to improve situation out there, I think because of that, this is a very well-suited use of the site. And looking at the future conditions, we don't have a lot of traffic, we don't have any, we don't see any changes in the levels of service at the intersection we analyzed in the P and peak hour operations because of the site. We do have some delays on, on, uh, on Columbus Bridge, typical of, you know, what you see out there today already, nothing else, we don't see any changes in part of experience today.
Any questions?
And I guess one other thing I want to talk about with regards to the sign variance, I think one of the key things for having additional signage is that when you travel this outbound on the Pike, in order to get into the site, you have to make that left turn at the intersection. You can't go past the intersection, when you see the site, then try and turn it left because we're now, we're going to restrict that to a right and a left only. So having additional signage, having maybe a little bit higher will only improve the visibility for motorists on the road, especially those traffic south that are having to make that left turn at the intersection coming from Columbus Bridge.
Do you think the signs, the directional signs are too low?
Uh, I don't think they're too low, having that primary sign about fifteen feet, I think we'll get it high enough because you're kind of coming down towards the intersections or coming.
Thirty inches seems kind of low to the ground.
And if I may, thirty inches was it in the area of the site, right?
Yeah.
So we have, we have thirty inches or lower.
Right.
So you're putting it closer to the, to the street as opposed to your further back.
Yes, how are people going south down on the Black Horse Pike, want to know if they have to make a left or a left turn? Because, you know, you see that, you're coming up with a sign, you're going to see the sign and most people probably when they pass Columbus Bridge, they know there it is and they go left in front, probably go left in front of the place.
Right, I mean, unfortunately, we can't put a directional sign before the intersection as we, we would.
How about a sign, like, just saying, you know how it says, like, we're a hospital or something, like, make left, like, where you're coming southbound on the Pike, before you get to Clemens Road, uh, Clemens Bridge Road intersection. Like, you know how they have signs for, why can't they want saying for, um, you can't put, you know, advertising others.
Do what?
Oh, we see all the time.
What?
Where people have a sign saying, hey, uh, Democrat Club this way, or, you know, or, or churches.
I think this is a hospital, though.
Well, it's, it's an emergency care place.
What, what could be done is the same sort of small two, uh, two square foot, uh, directional signs, we could actually put one.
With an arrow?
With an arrow.
So they'll see and come up to the.
I, I would think that would work.
With the same walk, same everything, it's just being entered.
I would think, yeah, entered, entered here.
And that will keep below that one. But at least as you come into the site, you'll see the whole arrow.
Yeah, but I, I agree the traffic on the Black Horse Pike is generally when southbound, they're, they might run a pretty good clip. And they might, they might go past it if we don't have something on that, on that sign that says, enter here, that might just help out.
You might want to think about making that sign a little larger than the directional sign, I don't know, something myself in the end there could work out.
Yep.
But I think, yeah, the directional sign looks to be a little too small by the time they see it, they pass it, it's too late to turn, so, or, or we're going to detail for it.
Thank you very much.
And you are. I have a question, Chris, Steve.
Sure.
You, you, uh, on your page, you're, you're moving one fire hydrant.
Yes.
Correct.
Yes.
Have they considered the turn radius or is it counterative, so if you hook up that fire hydrant?
Well, the, this has been subject.
When they turn it?
Well, we, we were subject to, uh, the fire department review, we'll have the time to comment on it. All we're doing is relocating it about six feet.
Well, outside the hook up, there's a hydrant.
It, it'll be whatever the fire department tells us to be.
Okay.
We need me, Kyle Fow, the senior designer of Environmentics Design, sixteen, seventeen, J, at the old one building. Yeah. We are Environmentics Design Architect, project architect and engineer, engaged by Cooper for design services for the building. But just nasty real quick overview of the design of the building and feel like a question you have at this time. Uh, it's about forty-seven, forty-eight hundred square feet, as mentioned earlier, it's going to be ground up, ready construction, commercial grade construction, as you likely knows, it's going to be a steel frame building. It's not a wood single frame building like our office is, it's a house of steel frame construction. Uh, the materials of the building, four or five main materials, very high quality materials, so we're spending a lot of money on the buildings, so these are not, uh, inexpensive, cheap buildings. So it consists mainly of decorative panel, uh, stone veneer, uh, clear glazing and decorative masonry block on two elevations of the building. It's about eighteen or nineteen feet tall, uh, and on the roof of the building, there's going to be two mechanical rooftop units. And I want to note there was a comment, a momentary review about screening of rooftop units. So right now, we have two approximately ten thousand B T U rooftop units and they're going to be enclosed and mechanical screened on all four sides that would match the height of the units. So regardless of which side is open or not, if you would catch a glimpse of the roof, uh, units will be screened, so you won't be seeing a bare rooftop unit.
You marked activity, how about page six?
This is, uh, eight, two thirty, eight, six.
These are three D stretchable buildings. And this signage is revised from the signs that was originally submitted.
Correct, there's, there's two proposed building elevation signs, one on the west elevation and one on the north elevation. In previous application, there was a sign on the north elevation that was proposed to pop up above and be silhouetted against the sky. Uh, we could remove that, close that on within the confines of building elevation. Uh, there was a comment about lighting, clarifying the building mounted lighting, uh, the signs aren't proposed to be illuminated, so they'll be illuminated from within a glowing effect, if you will, they don't project any light. So they look illuminated, but they will not still light out, if that makes sense. These are two dimensional elevations, so the same thing we've seen in three dimensional here, just spread across two dimensions. Uh, these are the south and west elevations that primarily face Black Horse Pike, Clemens Bridge Road. The gray material we see, this is a silver metal panel, and the sort of dark material, I apologize for the distance, it's hard to tell, is a stone veneer. So this is, uh, you know, you see it, residences, like retail, hospitality buildings. The back two elevations.
Is that one of the older buildings?
It is. I have a little to do in case somebody wants to see what was originally submitted versus.
So we're going to mark this one.
So this is the revised elevations, it shows the building signs as they move and also so does the proposed mechanical equipment screen.
And then A D.
A D represent the other two elevations of the building.
The A D of north and east.
The north and the east. This light gray material is, is a decorative masonry block material, we might call it a round base or a split base block. And, uh, there are windows, uh, there are clear storage windows at the top of the exam rooms, there are three doors out of the rear elevation of the building. One of those is an egress door, the other two access a mechanical room and a sprinkler room, which houses the sprinkler equipment through the sprinklers system of the building, which has to have direct access to the outside.
Any questions?
Is that, is that the typical size, Kyle, that you build for these urgent care?
Extreme typical, it's white.
Really?
Yeah, absolutely.
Forty step hours?
Anywhere from three thousand to six thousand, it's very typical for urgent care. And just to give you a sense of scale, most banks are about three, four thousand square feet, so if you, uh, deal with the sizes of them.
Think it would be a good fit.
Thank you. Steve, but is the panel item when he sat down, so it's a number of, of the question.
Thank you.
Steve, did you get a chance to evaluate the application to determine whether or not we meet the criteria necessary for the C guard system?
Yes, and all the variances we listed are beside the department setback, uh, and the purpose of C Q variance is pre-defined, is pre-developed. Uh, we have demonstrated that the deviations that we're requesting, uh, the benefits outweigh any possible detriments, uh, based on land pressure, and we don't believe there's any detriments as part of this, uh, proposed application. Benefits, uh, will be supporting the purposes of the municipal land use fault, which are, uh, freely, uh, purposes as, in, uh, land use fault. A, encourage municipal action to guide appropriate use of developmental lands. H, encourage location and sign of transportation, which will promote free flow of traffic. And that's specifically export of the increased height of, uh, the high line sign in the area of the high line sign, plus the additional, two additional directional signs. We're asking for a couple of four freestanding signs, so there's going to add the little signs, directors of the Columbus Bridge. And I promoting considerable, uh, uh, considerable visual enhancement, uh, and of the environment for free development. So obviously, this is a complete table column of the site, all new brand developments, and as we just heard from Environmentics, it's going to be a rather attractive. So based on this, it's my opinion of the benefits, as opposed to, we need to substantially outweigh or there are good benefits. Uh, and will not have any impact on the public good.
Any questions?
That is for Steve, I'm off, Steve. Thank you.
And that concludes our presentation, Patrick, Jeff and I, I'm glad you were here.
Uh, questions from the board for any of the professionals?
Would they anticipate starting?
When do we anticipate starting?
I would, I would expect that we start.
About nine o'clock?
I mean, building wise, probably in the fall. Looks like it kind of pretty important before the cold weather.
Right.
Yeah, most likely the fall baseball, and the outside is super, it takes, and obviously, they do have the, uh, the, I think.
It's like, yeah.
From south end, it's most probably.
At this point in time, I'd like to open up the floor to members of the public. Anyone in the public wishing to speak on this matter and this matter only, please come to the microphone and state your name and be heard.
Say no one, I'm, we close the public portion up in the meeting?
Second, please. Motion, Mr. Dickinson, second of the prosecution, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Mr. Rowan.
Yes, what comes before the board tonight is a site plan for preliminary, final site plan approval for Cooper Urgent Care Center. It's been made by L N, from the L S, the app. What the board is going to be voting on tonight, in addition to granting final and, and have to, uh, uh, say clean, final site claim approval, are two risk variances, uh, well, six variances altogether. The first variance is from third, three ninety-five thirteen A three, which our ordinance sets forth that parking, shall there be a parking setback from the proper line of twenty feet, the app is proposed twelve feet, the existing is eight point four seven feet. The app is actually coming in, the work, applying work than the, the former use. So I don't think the board should have any, be hesitant in granting that really. Uh, the other, uh, or variance is under thirty-nine dash nine I regarding impervious coverage. There is testimony, I believe, that the existing impervious coverage is approximately seventy-seven percent or I heard.
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five percent. The, our ordinance requires, uh, fifty, they're proposing sixty-three point five. Once again, they're actually less than, they're improving the impervious coverage and I wouldn't be hesitant in recommending the board to approve that. They're also asking for various, uh, variances from thirty-nine, uh, three ninety-five eighteen G seven, uh, extract that, they withdrew that, uh, they're going to revise the plan where the, uh, one sign is not going to be above the, uh, the building. They, uh, they requested a variance from thirty-nine, three nine five eighteen G three to permit an LED changeable sign, which I believe for this type of facility is, is, is appropriate, uh, when the, uh, the, uh, the public knows what's there and what services are there. They're also asking for variance from thirty-nine eighteen M three D. Uh, they are regarding a freestanding sign where our ordinance limits it to eight feet in height, they're asking for a, uh, to install a, uh, freestanding sign of fifty feet. Once again, the board should take into consideration the location of such request and, you know, the nature that business is requesting it. I believe the testimony is correct, but that clearly does not have a negative impact. Um, they're also asking for the variance from three ninety-five eighteen M three for now installing four signs, one high line sign and three signs which will be directional. I believe we added one tonight, uh, to show the public or, you know, where it enters is one of the, I believe, testimony made, uh, clarifies that and surely shows that that does not have a negative impact. Um, they're requesting certain waivers.
There's also variance for sign area.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, sign area, that was, should be a section three ninety-five eighteen M three D, where thirty square feet is permitted, they're requesting forty-two point seven five feet. Once again, we're taking consideration of the area.
Canyon or fast horse, delivery.
With, with, yeah, it's, and I think the testimony said that that's, that, uh, doesn't impact our ordinance. So I believe they are the variances and the waivers that they're requesting are set forth on, waivers from the checklist requirements, set forth on page three, the review letter five, six, twelve, twenty and twenty-seven. I believe our engineers said that they're.
Yeah, Dave, we actually need number five.
You only need number five?
Number twelve and.
Mr. President, is the screening involved? Not number, number five, Dave.
Yes, five, twelve. Twelve and twenty-seven because we are getting, we did hear testimony about the lighting.
Okay, so, uh, requesting a waiver for, uh, numbers five, twelve and twenty-seven on that checklist. Um, but the, uh, there's been testimony that there has been a meeting with our engineer and based on the discussions tonight, uh, in accordance with the review letter submitted, uh, by Penn Associates that there will, the plan will be revised to show those changes and those agreements and that'll be a condition of the, of this approval. Of course, uh, as with all approvals, it's subject to any outside the A D approval state, uh, county or, uh, Department of Transportation approvals. I believe that should, should be the summary of it unless it hasn't.
Does the board have any questions for any of the professionals before we make motion? Okay, just a reminder that, um, Mr. Stone will not be voting tonight, we have a full complement, so as I seated members, we have voting this evening. So that'll entertain a motion for approval of application sixteen dash zero, zero, two. Mr. Dickinson?
Sure.
Stichowski, roll call, please.
The hammer?
Yes.
Dickinson?
Yes.
Alperly?
Yes.
Duchian?
Yeah.
Pachowski?
Yes.
Fullerton?
Yeah.
Elliot Zapp, Semenari?
Yes.
Apabas?
Yes.
And Vanilla.
Thank you.
All right, guys, good luck. Thank you very much.
We'll get work on that side.
All right, real quick, just on, uh, my report, um, kind of funny, but the, uh, the trash enclosure behind Med Express, uh, that Keith is a mess. I was back there over the weekend and, and they have a slotted chain link trash enclosure. There was, uh, trash bag and debris all outside the enclosure, the enclosure itself has been, I guess, impacted by a truck or something. But I'm sure it's not medical waste out there, but I'm sure. But it's right behind Med Express, I'm sure, like, damn, he loves things that don't go in the, dirty needles are in that trash. And, um, I'd like to see them try to get that enclosure fixed sooner than later, because there was, there was trash, I mean, it could have happened. But, you know, two mohoing enclosure over here and then over here is Med Express and there was just bags all over the place. So I, I think we need to address that and they.
That would probably jump your boat.
Well, the, again, in the enclosure, it's just busted the heck, so there's just piling bags up where near the enclosure hoping, I guess, the trash guy picks them up by hand, I don't know. But I think we can get over there, again, it's, it's got to be a little bit dirty, the medical, yeah, okay? I appreciate it. Um, open this anyway?
I just had a question, I don't know, I probably wrote this up before, but, um, what, what are the chances that we would ever get a left turn signal at that intersection, like they have, like at Brown Road? Uh, and, and how do you know about doing that, it's the state roads, I'm guessing it would be, uh, under the state.
State don't have torture restriction?
Actually, uh.
Those are the cross street?
Councilman Farrell has, uh, reached out to the state and the county and they're looking at, uh, that's about as.
That's about as much answer as we got, that they're looking. Barrow would have to pay for any study, I think that's what we were told, if they got to that next level.
And I'm sure they're very pricey, very.
Probably, but I mean, it might be worth it for the town.
Well, I'm just thinking now with this coming up, because I've wondered for twenty-some years why, you know, because it's always, I know I do, I try to keep them late.
Yeah.
Richard Daley's not here.
Sorry, Pete.
There's been at least two meetings so far.
Yeah.
About it, but I, once again, I don't, this is a state of state.
That's a good idea, though. Anything else, old business? Do you have communications? Okay. Uh, good welfare, anybody here wishing to speak on anything at all, come on up and be heard.
Say no one, we got to close that public portion.
Okay, motion to close, Mr. Dickinson?
Second.
Second by Mr. Merrick Apadas, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion for adjournment? Mr. Alkerly, seconded by Mr. Dickinson, meeting adjourned at seven fifty. Thank you, everyone. Happy Father's Day, all.